Three minutes. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation.
Thank you very much, Colleen. I'd like to start the meeting off with the pleasure allegiance. I don't know about you guys, but we've been trying to get a flag, but.
Oh, we have a flag.
You got a flag?
Yeah, we have one. Hold on one second. It's right on the corner of the cabinet.
I know, I got my dad's flag.
Right, right there. Right there. Yeah. It's a little flag. It's not. It's just a picture. Just hold it up to the thing.
There you go. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, everybody. Welcome to first meeting. Wow, it's March already.
Yep.
Twenty twenty-one. That's Howard. Got a picture of him up there. So we we left the public meeting open for the short term rentals. I think Supernova had sent the email to all the board members and myself on her recommendations. I don't know is. So Bridget, would you like to just expand on a couple of things? Or would you like to talk about the email or?
No, thank you for the offer. I'm it was just sending the notes recapping what I stated at the last meeting.
Okay.
Um, and highlighting the fact that I think there's some potential business opportunities we're overlooking. By limiting the definitions and what can be used as a dwelling versus accommodations and whatnot. I have nothing further to add, though. Thank you.
You're welcome. So we still waiting for the referral from Olson County Planning. I did in my report, I'll touch on that a little bit. So with that said, I think I like to make if somebody would like to make or which the board's desire to close the public hearing.
Can I can I add a comment?
Well, absolutely.
Will you close?
Yes.
I had requested before using the Ulster County website to produce an aerial photo. And I would say that if there is a problem with the property line not being in the wrong place, going through a building or something. It doesn't prevent the homeowner from taking a magic marker and marking where the actual boundary of the property would be, which would certainly still be a whole lot better than getting anything that might be freehand drawn. So I would like to reiterate that that comment that I think this would be something valuable. And it would be valuable when the public comes to to talk. It would also have a side benefit that if there was a property line that wasn't in the right place. Maybe this would be an opportunity to get the thing corrected from Ulster County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, James. So before we make a motion, if the board desires to close the public hearing on the short term rentals, is there anybody else that would like to say something? On the short term rentals? So waiting for the referral from the county. We could close the public hearing and allow writing concerns about the short term rental legislation. So what's the board's desire? I mean, it's been open now for a month or two.
How were my only question is, so we've had some significant comments from some from Bridget. Do we? How are we going to address those? Are we going to keep it open or?
We address.
Keep it open to do that, or you want to?
We address those between the board and we we look at the referral from the county and see if those that Supernova and others had put into the board, we look at them carefully and see how if it's something that the board wants to introduce into the legislation.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's just we'll wait back from the county's referrals. And then we'll take it all as a board as a as a whole, and then we'll come up with the final version, I guess, right? From all the recommendations and what we we think ourselves too, right?
So right. We might think that, you know, the legislation and maybe maybe whatever the county might introduce. We might take that in consideration, or we might just like the law the way it is and just pass the law at the next meeting. So it's a board decision, so we'll move forward with that. So I need a motion to close the public hearing on the short term rentals.
I'll motion.
Need a second?
I'll second it.
So we're actually closing, but we'll take any written comments on the legislation to be considered. So all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? None being said, thank you, gentlemen, closing the public hearing on the short term rentals. We have a public hearing about the ratification of the police reform committee report. If anybody would like to talk about that from the public. And address your comments, please, to the chief or Mr. Baker, Councilman Baker, if you do.
I just have one comment now, and and that is that we did get some updates from one of the committee members, Mr. Magliato. Earlier this week, and I forwarded those to the board members. They were just pretty much cleaning us from the language in the performance evaluation section. Jerry had no problems with them. I believe that's true, Chief, right?
Very good, very good suggestions.
So I'd like to accept those. That's the only comments I have seen.
So referring back to the public hearing, Howard and Chief, you want to keep it open or you want to wait to close it at the next meeting and adopt the resolution? Or what would you would you desire?
I would like to close it tonight if we could. And so that I don't have any, we have to get this up to Albany by April 1st. We have plenty of time, but if we wait until the next meeting.
I have no more. I have no problem with closing the public hearing if the board desires.
As long as nobody else has any comments, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on this.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Koenig. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Oppose? And none being said, the public hearing for ratification of the public police reform committee is closed. So moving on, does anybody? No, I see. You know what I forgot? Let's do the most important thing is a moment of silence for all the brave men and women fighting all over the world for democracy and freedom. And especially for those frontline during this pandemic. And we really sincerely send our prayers out to those that had been lost in this pandemic. Especially in Marlborough, we lost seven people. So that was important. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Make the motion approve the agenda.
Yes, so all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? So thank you, gentlemen. Now we motion to approve minutes from the February 22nd, 2021 town board meeting.
Make the motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
None being said, thank you, gentlemen. A motion to approve minutes from the February 22nd, 2021 public hearing on the planning board terms. I need a a motion to approve those minutes.
A motion.
Need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. Motion carried. Okay. Authorized payments of bills in the amount of $115,615.78, gentlemen. I need a motion to pay the bills.
I'll make that motion.
Need a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? None being said, thank you, gentlemen. Motion carried. Pay the bills. Any comments on the agenda? Comments on the agenda? Comments on the agenda? None being had. Well, move right along. No presentation today? We'll go to report of the department and boards. So tell you, it's been quiet, but I go to work every day and hopefully that phone will ring and contracts will come in. And things will be great. So I regularly attend weekly Ulster County COVID meeting updates and the legislator Tom Corkano update us on all that later on. I just saw that they're going to have a state run site at the county fairground. So that's really good. So we're moving along really good on that. Unfortunately, like I'm sure Tom will tell you that we had seven deaths. Met with Next Amp representatives to get updates on landfill solar project. They'll be reporting to the town board at our next meeting. They're moving pretty fast on this, so I'm going to put them on the agenda. So hopefully we'll see some activity going as far as building the solar panels on the landfill come the fall. I I met with somebody out there, surveyed the property for the solar project. I met with Budget Director Chris Wilco and Town Clerk Corcoran, Colleen Corcoran, and I we met with key bank representatives, discussed key bank fees. So that was a great, that's an eye opener. Attended June Ulster County Transportation Council meeting. I met with Bill Palmeride to discuss upcoming summer camp program. I was talking to Scott and saying that probably at the end of March, we'll find out exactly where we're going with the pandemic. As far as social distancing and how many we can have at the camp or, you know, see what's going on with the vaccine. So hopefully things will get better. But if not, then we'll have to make a decision whether we want to continue opening the camp in 2021.
Yeah.
Attended vaccination clinic at the town hall. Thank you, Tom. Met with representatives of Central Hudson and Co. at Chance Park again to discuss about lighting. We have the poles. We have the lights thanks to Thomas Corcoran. And all we need is somebody to put the poles in. I talked to Central Hudson about the central pole that we would rent to take all the electricity off and what that would amount to as far as fees. Attended Ulster County Association of Supervisors. That's a virtual meeting. Always good to hear from my fellow supervisors what's going on in their town. Attend the virtual town planning board meetings. I spoke with senior citizen Anna Rose to discuss senior needs. I met with local farmer to discuss possible purchase of dirt for upper portion of San Jose, Milton Landy Park. Local farmer has dug out for a pond on his property and myself, Gary Lazaroff and John are going to go look at the dirt. I already looked at it, but I wanted to make sure that it's the right dirt. It looks like it's sandy loom. Looks like it has a little clay in it, but not that much. But I think it would suffice and we can move forward. There's about 1,000 yards there. And so we would use, we would pay approximately $5 a yard. And then we use the contract to the hallway, we use Mr. Philo because he won the bid. So we'll see how that goes. If it goes well, I think it's a good good stab at it, 1,000 yards. Let's see. So I spoke with Gregory Hart from New York State DOT for an update on statute status of the Milton Landing Railroad Crossing Project. He's saying it's going well. He's pretty surprised about that. CSX is taking it on. So we'll keep a close eye on that because we know how CSX could drop the ball sometimes, but he seemed very confident and gives me confidence. So he's a good guy, Gregory is. I received an update on from engineers on South Pier. As you know, Alan and Howard and how Scott right now, they held off. They're waiting for the ice to melt. I think it'll be melting pretty soon with this warm weather coming up. So hopefully we'll see them back with the barge. And I think the first thing they'll do is probably cut the pilings, the steel pilings to approximately well, exactly where they need it and then continue to work on that. And then attended Ulster County Planning Board meeting. At that meeting, I wanted to be at was because when they were going to discuss the referrals. Cindy was on that Cindy Lanzetta, our representative for the the planning board, the Ulster County Planning Board was on that meeting. So I just wanted to hear what they were going to say about our code with our short term rentals. And basically, I think they they liked it. And might have a couple of recommendations. So let's see how much the referrals come out. But thank you very much for listening to that. Appreciate it. So a building inspector, Thomas Corcoran, and he has two hats, of course, and he's the county legislator. Thomas?
A monthly report and February 2021 Building Department Certificate of Occupancy to Request for Information 14. Fire inspections nine, fire calls one, ordered a remedy six, complaints 18, burn permits issued 11. Building permits additions renovations five, burning permits 11, carports, garages one, decks one, demolitions one, two electrical, one furnace, one mobile home, two sheds, one sign, one tank install removal. Estimated cost of building 397,600, total of 27 permits. These collected for the month certificate occupancy 400, building permits $3,021.70, request for information $1,400, fire inspections 665. Burn permits 25 for a total income of $5,511.70. Total miles 980 with total gas uses of 79 gallons.
Thank you, Tom. Would you like to do a report on the vaccines and COVID situation in Marlborough, please?
From last Thursday, that's the last time I did a report online to today. Ulster County has an increase of 243 active cases, making the total right now 11,286. Marlborough from last Thursday to today is up 26 for a total of 739, 118 are active, 614 recovered. And unfortunately, seven deaths total, but we've had no increase for quite some time. In comparison to Highland, was a little bit more difficult situation with the nursing homes. Their total is 1,100, 1,058. They're up 16. 134 active cases, 868 recovered, and unfortunately, 56 deaths compared to our seven. So tragically, their numbers are way up. Ulster County active cases as of today is 1,599. We have 9,452 have been recovered. Unfortunately, this past week was one additional death from last Thursday to today. We've tested 288,984 people in Ulster County and 279,000 of those were negative tests. As far as mentioned earlier today, they announced that New York State will add 10 mass vaccination sites in New York State. We were lucky to be one up in Ulster County at the Ulster County Fairgrounds. And that will have more information in the next couple of days on scheduling and times. We also did get an additional location in the area at SUNY Orange and Middletown. They were additional sites. So we've got two out of the 10. We're locally in the Hudson Valley, so that was was good news for us. As of March 19th, New York State restaurants will increase to 75% occupancy. On March 22nd, the social gatherings in public spaces will grow to 100 people indoors, 200 people outdoors, and that's up from the 50 person cap that we've had for quite a long time. So again, 100 indoors, 200 people outdoors, and that'll start on March 22nd. Start on April 2nd. Event venues of under 10,000 will reopen at 33% capacity. And that's where we are as far as getting capacity increase. We still urge everybody to wear a mask. Vaccinations are happening. We did do a local vaccination for our local seniors. We got 78 people vaccinated last Thursday. Second shots will happen in approximately three more weeks. I did get an additional 60 seniors and locals up to Ulster County Vaccination Site at Kingston High School. This past Thursday, another 60 up there. So we got about 140 vaccinated for the local residents over the last 10 days. So that that's been moving along pretty good. Again, with the additional vaccination mass site at at the fairgrounds, those vaccinations will increase. We'll get more and we'll get more people vaccinated.
And that's that's, I think you have to agree, that's a game changer right there. As long as the vaccines are the vaccines coming in pretty much regularly and increasing vaccines.
Well, again, we'll see that, you know, we were on that nasty pace of thousand a week for quite a long time when we started this, when we first opened up. We did get that influx last week of about 300, 3,500 vaccines. So that was an increase and we'll see if that stays steady. We hope it does. But again, with the with the mass site opening up in the fairgrounds. I'm hoping that's going to 10 times what we're going to get locally. And then again, with with what happened in in Middletown between the two sites, I think there's going to be a lot of vaccinations available, a lot more readily available in the Hudson Valley, and people won't have to travel to Westchester, New York City or Albany between the Middletown site and the and the Ulster County site up in New Poles. I think the Hudson Valley will be well represented with the vaccines finally. It took us just about two months, but we finally see some light at the end of the tunnel and more than 1,000 vaccines entering the county is going to happen fairly soon.
Is it Marist also, Tommy?
Yeah, Marist did a, they did a little pop up this past weekend. I don't know if they, if that was one of the 10 sites. I think they just had a pop up this past weekend.
Marist is doing it with my wife's hospital, Westchester Medical. They're they're an extension site for Westchester Medical and some of her doctors and nurses went over there and helped out this past weekend. And but yeah, that was a site for them. I think they did 90,000 so far vaccinations overall throughout all their sites in the state.
Wow, that's great. That's great. It's moving. It's starting to see the little light in the tunnel. I noticed also that the, when you get go to the website, that the CVS and other pharmacies are are opening up. They seem to book real fast, but you know, Tom, what the distribution nation of the to the pharmacies, how many vaccines do they usually get?
Seems that I don't know. I mean, like I said, the private, the private pharmacist I've been working with Neil. It seems to vary. He could get 100 one week and and get 1,000 next week and getting on the following. That was the consistency of or say the inconsistency of what he was getting. But and that's that's still to be seen. But again, with the mass vaccination sites coming to the county. It's going to surely help Neil and everybody else in the in all the Mid Hudson area to get their vaccinations as and hopefully move these phases a little quicker than they anticipated.
Just one more question. The people that got vaccinated in Marlborough, the second shot, will they come to Marlborough to do the second shot?
Yes, he's going to do the, he'll do the 78 locally, waiting on a phone call and when those vaccinations are coming. But those 78 who got them last Thursday. They'll come back and do that. The second shot is much easier because the six foot distance is is a little bit lax. So what we'll do is we'll put basically 39 people in the in the in the courtroom. Eight all 39 in those seats. They'll sit there for 15 minutes and then we'll rotate all 39 out and bring the other 39 in to have it done in two groups.
Any other questions for Tom? Thank you very much for doing that, Tom. Appreciate it.
Great job. By the way, a bunch of people were really appreciative of that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Tom, really good job. Did a great, great service for the community. So great job.
You're welcome.
If I may, I'd like to add to that that Tom coordinated vaccination with my wife. I went up there Thursday. I was in and out of there an hour. It's just an extraordinary job, Tom, organizing that and keeping our community informed. I mean, just terrific work. It's not the kind of thing you see everywhere. And I'll tell you, a lot of my colleagues, because they're scattered all over the place, we're like, oh, how'd you get a shot? Who'd you know to get a shot? And I said, that's just living here. So you did an awesome job, man. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. So moving along. Police chief.
Yes, sir. Monthly report for February 2021. Personal injury auto accidents, three fatal accidents, zero. Property damage accidents, 20 for a total of 23 for the month. Vehicle and traffic summons is issued 46, one parking violation issued. Complaint activity total bodily entries 1,408. Total arrests for the month 18. Telephone calls handled 1,898. We had eight hours overtime for part time dispatcher. And we drove 12,418 miles for the month. The fuel consumption of 1,088.738 gallons. On the use of force. Had three use of forces this month. Two were for the destruction of deer. One was an incident involving hands on Ulster versus defendant with zero sibling complaints for them.
Getting some background noise. What is that background noise?
Not me.
Seems like there's a delay on somebody's machine back feeding in. That's why I muted myself to make sure it wasn't me, but you can hear it.
So did everybody hear what I said?
Yeah. Yeah, I could hear, but it was a lot of background noise. Now it's gone.
Okay, really.
It's almost like it's like, it's almost sounds like a CB in the background or something like somebody's talking.
I'm catching it like it's it's the end. It's like the last part of somebody's conversation. It comes into it's weird.
Yeah.
Okay.
Technology.
Alan, would you like to do one of the highway superintendent's reports?
Speaking of technology, I can't get on. I can't leave this meeting. If I leave the meeting, I'm going to get done.
I got it if you want.
Somebody is going to have to read it.
I got it.
Okay.
Okay. John Alagi Highway Superintendent, monthly report for February 2021. Roads, we continued to make repairs to the roads with coal patch where needed throughout the town. We did road controls every day, checking the ice and any water runoff that salted them and then as needed. Snow and ice from 131 till 24. There was, as predicted, snowfall of 12 to 24 inches. We did receive 22 to 24 inches. We spent 25 and and through 28 removing snow banks from the storm in both hamlets. We did have several snow systems come through our area this month. Shop work, we did our midseason maintenance on our trucks. We washed and checked all sanders and plows. Shared services, we assisted the water department with water main break on 213 at Dock Road in Milton. COVID-19 on 226, one of our crew tested positive for COVID. And we had to shut down the department for the required time, which they're now open as of today.
Yep.
Fuel usage, gas 189.593 gallons, diesel 2,806.747 gallons, respectfully, John Alagi Highway Superintendent.
Thank you, Scott. So this is Water Superintendent Charlie Majao. Monthly report for February, water consumption total was 15.531 million gallons, which is a daily usage of 554,678 compared to last month, 15,963 million gallons, which is a daily usage of 514,600 compared to a year ago. Water consumption was 14.369 million gallons for the month, which is a daily usage of 495,482. Summary for the month, hydrogens, we had to clean snow around hydrogens. Hydrants, uh, water mains, we had to repair an eight-inch water main on Dock Road with the help of the Highway Department. Service line, we had to repair a service line on South Street. Meters, we had to replace four frozen meters in houses. We had to repair the roads where we had water main breaks with coal patch. Storage tank had to be, had to do a temporary repair on a pinhole leak at the Western Avenue, uh, Western Avenue Storage Tank. So far, we had, had four pinholes that have had to be repaired. Frozen homes caused for two frozen pipes, Grand Street and South Street, had to be turned off basement, basement or flooded. We had to pump out our pressure pits because of flooding. Cliff and myself had to attend classes for the New York State Backflow Prevention. Service line inspection closing five, markouts twenty, gallons of gas, two hundred and ten, gallons of diesel, twenty-five. Knowledge for the month, seventeen hundred. Charlie Majayo. Okay, Town Clerk. Hi, Colleen.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
Monthly report for February twenty twenty-one. Burn permits, one for forty dollars. Dog licenses, eighteen for a hundred dollars. Toll licenses, one for two hundred and fifty dollars. Water services, one for fifteen hundred dollars. Transfer station permits, four for two hundred and fifty-five dollars. Punch cards, fifteen for eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. Marriage licenses, uh, two for thirty-five dollars. Building department fees, one for five thousand four hundred and seven dollars and sixty cents. Fire fees, one for one thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. Accident reports, twelve for sixty dollars. Certified copies, six for a hundred and seventy dollars. Clerk fees, one for twenty-two dollars. Lawyer request, one for a dollar seventy-five, for a grand total of nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-five cents.
Thank you very much, Colleen. Great job, as always. Uh, the wastewater, I'll do that one uh, for the month of February twenty twenty-one. Both the Marlboro and Milton wastewater treatment plants complied with OSPE's requirements, following our monthly status statistics for both plants. Uh, Marlboro wastewater treatment plant average daily flow is a hundred and eleven thousand gallons per day, about sixty-three percent of design capacity. Average B O D removal is ninety-eight percent. Air suspended solids removal is ninety-six percent. Uh, Milton Water Treatment Plant, average daily flow is twenty-eight thousand gallons per day, about fifty-three percent of design capacity. Average B O D uh, removal was ninety-nine percent. Air suspended solids removal was ninety-nine percent. Uh, both Marlboro and Milton plants operated normally during the month of February without any major changes or events uh, due to weather and the build up of snow around the building. We have still not begun work on the Marlboro greenhouse roof. We hope to begin repairs at some point during the month of March. Overall, both water, wastewater treatment plants are in good working order, but getting older. If you need any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me. Stay safe and be healthy, and that's real Falco. As you know, uh, the greenhouse had some damage done to the roof, and uh, we applied uh, for insurance, and we got some of the insurance to start. And once it's finished, then we take pictures and then we get the rest of the insurance. So that was a, it's a good thing. You wanna do the uh, dog control, uh, Scott?
Sure. Uh, Town of Marlboro Dog Control, February report from two-one to two-twenty-eight from Andrew McKee. Overview, received a total of seven calls this month, including two calls to service for the Marlboro P D, State Police, and Ulster County Sheriff. Responds to active complaints and/or cases which are now closed and resolved. Currently have three open cases that have been addressed and are ongoing or unresolved. We impounded zero dogs this month. There were zero dog bites reported this month. We currently have zero dogs in the kennel. We have zero cases in the Marlboro Justice Court at this time. With warmer weather coming, there is a tendency to leave our pets outside longer. Please do not leave your pets outside when you are not home. Cold temperatures and cold rain and snow can come quickly. Respectively, Andrew McKee.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you for reading that. Uh, assesses office, we prepared for property tax estimates. We proceeded twenty-four real property transfers. Uh, we are continuing to work on collect, collecting our new construction and verifying our sales data. Howard, Planning Board?
Yep, Planning Board Review, February twenty twenty-one, meeting February first, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, attendees were Chris Brand, Manny Couchy, Steve Clark, Cindy Lanzetta, Joe LaFara, Bob Translator, James Garofalo. Agenda items, first was Nissan subdivision on ninety-eight Peach Lane in Marlboro, public hearing for subdivision. Public hearing was open and closed with limited public input. The applicant will return. Next item was Hart Canosa on one sixty-two Old Indian Road in Milton for a final lot line, um, change revision. Uh, the lot line was granted approval via resolution by unanimous vote. Third item was Crechio, South Street, Crechio Lane, Milton. Sketch lot line approval. Concerns regarding assessments and rights of way were discussed. The attorney will review existing driveway and maintenance agreement. Uh, then finally, they did a review of the site plan checklist. The board continued to work on revising the site plan checklist for applicants. A discussion regarding lock boxes for commercial property apposals was held. Next deadline is Friday, February fifth. Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, February sixteenth. And then we roll on to the minutes of that meeting. Everyone was in attendance. The agenda for that meeting on the sixteenth was approval of stenographic minutes for one nineteen twenty-one. Approval uh, for the above minutes was granted unanimously. Second item, H S C Milton LLC Dollar General Route nine W Milton, public hearing and site plan on lot line revision. Public hearing was held with the Marlboro residents expressing their concerns regarding the proposed store. The board discussed comments received from the Ulster County Planning Board, traffic issues, nine W access, easements to adjoining parcels. Public hearing was adjourned until March first, twenty twenty-one. Second item was Nissan subdivisions, eighty-nine Peach Lane, Marlboro Public Hearing subdivision. Public hearing was open and closed. The board authorized the attorney to complete negative declaration and resolution of approval for the next meeting. Next item was Lamella Real Estate, eleven eighteen Route nine W Marlboro, final subdivision. The board reviewed comments provided by Pat Hines. A public hearing for this application will be held on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Next item was Crechio, South Street, Crechio Lane, Milton, final lot line. The lot line was granted approval via resolution by unanimous vote. Then discussion with that lawyer or engineer and or stenographer. The Encore Restaurant, a brief discussion was held regarding the applicant utilizing a site for a mixed-use real estate office. In addition to the existing restaurant, the applicant will complete a site plan application and appear at a later meeting. Second item was review of the site plan checklist, which the board continued to work on revising and uh, the site plan checklist for applicants. Next deadline is February nineteenth. Next scheduled meeting is March first. Respectfully submitted, Chris Brand, Chairman of Town of Marlboro Planning Board.
Thank you, Howard. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Uh, let's go to the report of the committees. Recreation Committee.
Well, in recreation, I wanted to ask the board's opinion on, obviously, we can't have a Easter egg hunt. I know me and you talked about this. But how is the board's feeling on, um, I don't know what you call it, but like an Easter drive-through at the park, like we kinda did with uh, Halloween? Where maybe we could have, we could hand out candies or hand egg-filled candies and uh, have the Easter bunny at the end. Not taking pictures, because then we'd have a line a mile long, but uh, I mean, we do have a budget for, for, for this. Uh, I'm willing to do it, and I, I don't know if you guys are okay with that, but I mean, I'm just trying to think of things we can do to get some involvement with the community.
What date would that be?
Uh, well, it's early this year, right? I think Easter is on the fourth. Easter Sunday is the fourth this year. So I was either saying either that Friday or Saturday before, or I could do it the week before. I, I don't know what you guys think.
Um, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, Scott.
Any, I'll have my second vaccination by the thirtieth, so I'm good to help you out.
That's good. And I don't know, like, uh, we probably can do, I was gonna talk to Tina tomorrow. We might even be able to probably hand out the coloring contest. And actually, they could hand them back to us as they drive through, maybe.
Right. So uh, yeah, and I'll get the uh, Lions Easter bunny, chocolate bunnies that we give out. So, yeah, we can do that. Absolutely.
Sounds like, I'll come in and uh, I'll discuss with Tina tomorrow and you, and we'll, we'll pull it all together.
Yeah, sounds great. Good idea.
All right.
What time tomorrow, Scott? I could stop by.
You can't have three of us together now.
Be too many.
Oh, that's right. As long as you guys don't talk town board meeting, you're fine.
We're talking about Easter bunnies, come on.
Turn on the Easter bunny.
Yeah.
We are athletes.
I can lead the roommate if you wanna come in.
Now that's a, look, look. If you guys make a decision about the Easter bunny regarding the town of Marlboro, then we got bigger issues.
I'll probably be there around ten, nine or ten, so whatever. We'll be there. We'll figure it out. We'll get it going.
Not a problem. Thank you. Uh, we talked about that, and uh, it was kinda so-so, we didn't know. Yeah, but, yeah, I think it's a great idea.
All right, cool.
All right, see you tomorrow.
I'll ask John, maybe the guys could bring their stuff down like they did last time and let the kids see the trucks and stuff and things like that, so, all right. Sounds good.
Maybe we can make a little festive, too. We'll talk about it tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll figure it out. All right, cool.
Anything else on uh, recreation? I know, I, I stop up there and the uh, the playground gets, uh, the new playground gets a lot of use, and people will just love it up there. Uh, a lot of people even from Highland and all over the place, so it's getting used and it's getting, uh, people love it. So it's a great place to bring your grandchildren and your children. Uh, anything on the emergency management preparedness committee?
No updates.
Okay, thank you. Uh, there's no report on the C A C. I T Committee, uh, we're getting together. Yeah, have we, did anybody put anything in that they like to?
Uh, yeah, I got a list of a couple of things, but nothing, I mean, what they're asking for is nothing major. The major thing is, as Howard knows, is, and you know, are the uh, software upgrades. If we have to go down that route, that's gonna be uh, big, the big dollars. But uh, the stuff they put in is not major stuff, so we should be all right.
Okay.
We did a lot this year, so that's why, so.
Last year, we did a lot. We went.
Yeah, this past year, we did a lot. We went over budget last year.
Yeah, a little bit. But it was worth it. I mean, it was during the pandemic. It was the right time to do it. I mean, work from home. So I think it was uh, yeah, a good move on the town board, uh, decision to buy those and uh, also buy the new service. So I think it all works out pretty good.
Yep.
Uh, Milton Train Station Foundation, uh, no report there. Actually, uh, I did talk to Peter Hoffman when he was getting his vaccine at the uh, at, at the courthouse uh, last week, and he's, he is working on something as far as the trains and the video. He's working with other people. That, that seems to be a big thing with people, uh, watching trains like at their house, you know, it streams into. So uh, he's gonna let me know how he's progressing with that. It's not gonna cost the town any money, so.
That's when he, he asked last time, whether we're gonna put a camera on the?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I guess he's, he's been working on it and uh,
Yep.
he didn't have time to really get into depth, but I think that's a good thing. Not that he had time, not, no time, but he's working on it. Uh, Milton Landing Citizens Committee, uh, great news, right? With uh, Alan, we got the five thousand dollars for us from C S X.
Yeah, we got the check today from C S X for five thousand, so that's gonna take care of a portion of the fence uh, on the riverside of the park to the train tracks, you know, to, to block that off. So, great start. Uh, give a big, big round of applause to Jerry and Rosemary Wine, as usual. They really came through for us. Again, we should have that, we should have that project done this, this spring, summer, I would imagine.
Yeah, the balusters are a problem with uh, with C S X as always. I mean, we've been working on that for four years now. We're actually doing it.
Well, I think, I think if we just say, hey, look, we, we got funding for the fence through you, we're gonna start, we're, we're gonna start the fence, so here's our schedule. You know what I mean? So we'll just do it that way.
I could, I could start that dialogue tomorrow, too. I know, uh, Gal wants to go a different room, but I don't know who anybody else.
Let's start the route that we started. I mean, if we have to find somebody else, we will, you know what I mean?
I'll start it tomorrow.
Yeah, and I even think Greg Hart might be able to help us out, too. He's gotta know somebody in there as well.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Yeah, that, that's great, because we, yeah, we had five thousand, we had five thousand from a donation, so I think we got around fifteen thousand dollars in the kitty for.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Good stuff. Uh, Howard, you have anything on Mil- on the uh, Meet Me in Marlboro?
Last time I spoke to Sheila regarding Meet Me in Marlboro was a couple of weeks ago, and it had to do with the sign on the property. As you enter Milton from, as you're coming south, that sign is gonna have to be moved and uh, probably the Lions Club sign, too.
Yep.
Talked about maybe making a joint sign of some kind, something a little simpler. Uh.
Didn't that gentleman say that after he cuts the road in, they might, they might be able to put it back up?
Yes, yes. He, he is, he's being cooperative, and you know, it can't go at the right place. That's exactly where it is now.
Right.
Maybe a little bit to the.
Followed true on that.
I, I've spoken to him a couple of times, and he seems to be willing to cooperate as far as that's concerned.
That's good.
Tom has, too, I think, and uh,
Yeah.
So that is the only. There were a couple of other things she discussed at that meeting. One was, uh, she wanted to do Eagle Watch down by the train station, but it was a little too late to organize that. And people are doing it anyway. I think there are eagles down there, if you ever, I heard today that there is a, there are a couple eagles sighted right there in the Milton Landing, uh, south. Things like that, but nothing, nothing earth-shattering.
Okay.
Probably remember it after, after we hang up in this meeting.
The Hamilton Milton Associates, uh, Alan?
Yeah, I was in touch with Vivian. Um, they're playing, they're planning on doing the planting this year. Uh, they usually, it's the third week of May. They usually do it, they don't have a concrete date. But they do have, um, they do have plants on order, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be a patriotic year. Put it to that way. She showed me a picture of what's ordered. It's gonna be a beautiful bouquet or a hanging basket, red, white, and blues.
Oh, that's great.
She's got thirty-two ordered, um, or enough for thirty-two pots ordered. Um, and she just doesn't have the final date as of yet, so. And I don't know what they're gonna do as far as a cleanup with the COVID rules. I don't know, things are relaxed by then, but, you know, I think we're just play by ear at this point, but they're definitely, we'll be planning, and they're definitely will be for ours.
Thank you. Howard, anything going on at Transfer Station?
Nothing other than, you know, the Nexamp stuff, which we already spoke about, so.
Yeah, that's exciting stuff. I stopped up there the other day and saw Larry and Jeff in there. They're, they're still in fine.
I think they wanna come to our next uh, town board meeting. Did you see that email from them?
No.
They, just before this meeting, there was an email from Nexamp requesting to be.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, I mentioned that they wanna get in front of the town board as soon as possible, and that'll be uh, the next meeting.
Right, I'm, I'm all for that, so.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, they're moving ahead fast. They wanna get it done, so this way they, you know, actually do the capital work and get that done, too. Uh, hopefully. That's a great thing. Be nice to see uh, solar plant, solar panels on that uh, on the cap there. I think it's gonna be awesome. Um, you know, we've been working on it for six years. We had every day, every different company, and so Nexamp is the one that this uh, actually uh, uh, did uh, you know, for the R F P, so, and they, they're just about done uh, on their uh, two-megawatt one on, on the turnpike, and that looks awesome, too. If you, you could sneak by and you could see that, fields of uh, solar panels. And uh, the Police Reform Committee, uh, we just uh, closed the public hearing. You know, anything you, you guys wanna talk about? Hey, for, we're good?
Just have the, we'll have the resolution upcoming here a little bit later, and I just wanna thank everybody again that was on the committee. And I wanna thank uh, particularly Jeff Magliano. Those last couple of weeks, he's really helped a lot in getting the uh, wording of the report, just so, so.
He did a great job. So did you and the chief. You put a lot of time into this. Really appreciate it. The board really appreciates it. Thank you. Going to old business, I haven't received anything as far as contracts for the time back billing. We got like almost $900,000 out there. Maybe with the COVID relief bill, things will happen and open up with the monies, but we'll find out after April the first with the budget for the state budget. There's no, no report on the water district improvement for Milton Turnpike Crossroad. Uh, we discussed the short term rentals. Uh, I think what I'd like to do, if it's all right with you gentlemen, is, uh, have the dialogue as far as going, uh, talking, uh, about, uh, the application fee and the escrow fee. I think we're almost there. And then also fees for, uh, the certification for the short term rentals. Maybe we could have a dialogue about that going, uh, in the coming weeks. And then, uh, have the workshop meeting on, uh, the next meeting and finally nail, nail it down. And also, uh, probably at that meeting, if everything goes well and incorporate some of the stuff from the public hearing and from the referral from the county. We'll present that the resolution and adopt it. On the, uh, public, uh, him, uh, employee emergency plan, I got the, uh, the police union to, uh, look at it. They came up with some suggestions. Uh, I asked the board if I could go to David Weiss. He said the suggestions are not, uh, uh, they're fine. Uh, they wouldn't be your fine on the, uh, the contract that we have. I did send it along to, uh, Gary to send it along to their representative, their union representative. I haven't reviewed anything. I'd like to get it, uh, and present it April 1st, uh, to the state. So, uh, I'll call Mr. Wilson up again tomorrow and see if, uh, he looked at it at all. Under new business, uh, we're talking about, uh, you know, I, uh, on the employee compensation. Danielle, did you know what Penny came up with? What was she like to do?
Yeah, Colleen.
I mean, Colleen, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, I spoke with her and she spoke with Chris Wilklow. And I guess the route that's easiest to take is, uh, comp time. So she said she would do that. But I had, which I had spoke to you and to Scott about previously, I had put a, a chart aside with hopes that something would happen because me and Danielle wouldn't have been able to do what we did during tax time without her. She stayed after hours with me, um, because I never go home on time during tax time. I work every weekend. I'm open to the public twice, um, at the end of the month and she was there with me a lot. So I have, um, put aside the chart that I was keeping track of her hours that weren't during normal business hours. Because I felt I had the money in my budget and, um, due to COVID, my aunt wasn't able to be there unfortunately. But Penny stepped up in an amazing way and like I said, we wouldn't have been able to do without her. So I'm hoping, um, that the board will understand that and, and give her the comp time that she's so deserving of.
Yeah. Uh, so, uh, your aunt felt uncomfortable coming in during COVID or?
Yeah, my aunt is 73 and I would never put.
Yeah.
He's young.
Yeah. And, uh,
Yeah, she's a young seven, like young 73, but she's not, you know, I would never want to compromise her health in any way, shape or form.
No.
But Penny, like I said, as soon as I asked her, she was ready, willing and able and I'm, I could, we couldn't have done it without her.
Yeah, she's a great employee, just like everybody else. They always chip in. They've always have and always probably will, you know, it's a tight group, so. Yeah, we really appreciate them. Tom, this is the.
She went above and beyond.
Tom, uh, is all right with you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, we ran a bunch.
Okay, great. So that's what it's all about, guys. So I want, uh, Chris Wilklow, you, as you know, is very stickled on detail. So, uh, I need to have a motion that, uh, we allow Penny to have. I think it was like 50 hours, Colleen, was that correct?
I think it worked out to be 56 or 57 hours total. Yeah.
So she's willing to take it on comp time, probably a Friday, um, whatever. Uh, I need a motion to, uh, that would allow us to give her that.
A motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So move. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you to Penny.
Thank you and thank her.
I have many a time.
So, uh, the next thing is the, uh, I talked to Anna Rose when I was talking about the vaccines and stuff. And she implied to me that the seniors really were going to miss their corn, beef and cabbage, uh, dinner. So I said, I said, Anna, you know, we haven't used, uh, the two grand. I don't know if we're going to use the two grand. Would you like to spend it on dinners? I'll call Steve Jensen up, see if the Lions would like to distribute it. And she said, yeah, that'd be great. So I called Steve up. Steve is Steve Jensen, uh, who is the president of the Lions. He thought it was a great idea. So he's got some, uh, numbers from Kirkie. I think it was 12 bucks for the, uh, for the meal. And, uh, so we're moving forward on that with the, uh, lion, uh, with the Lions Club distributed it. The seniors are actually going to, uh, purchase it. They'll get the, uh, voucher and then submit it to town and we'll take it out of their budget. That, uh, $2,000 budget. So I just, uh, hope that everybody is on board with that. I think it's a great thing, like almost like the Easter egg, just get people back some fantasy and, you know, and they really miss each other, you know? And, uh, I don't know when that's going to happen. Maybe it'll happen soon because CDC, I think, just announced that, uh, like if everybody, if you have three people and if you all been, uh, vaccinated to the fullest, that you actually could, uh, don't have to wear a mask. So I, uh, I stopped in and saw Rosemary and, uh, Jerry today and we said, oh, look, we don't have to wear a mask. We're all vaccinated. So it's pretty great. So hopefully, uh, things will, uh, go along. So I need a motion to, uh, make that happen, uh, to, uh, spend that money from.
Make the motion to utilize the $2,000 budget that we have for the senior citizens for St. Patrick's dinner.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, it's none being said. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. And we talked about the dirt from Sands Avenue. If the dirt's good, I think a thousand, uh, it's a start, you know? Thousand yards. I think it's going to be all right. I'm going to, well, check it with, uh, John. He's the final, uh, go and no go.
Are we going to like, uh, because I think what they say, the engineer said we needed like 20, 300 yard, 2500 or 100? So are we going to do like one section instead of like just trying to spread it over the whole thing? Or we're going to try to do one section? So we get one section fully grassed?
Uh, you know, that's, that's a good point. Uh, the other thing is I was thinking of, you know, if we're going to do this, uh, maybe we should get, the engineer and spend a few bucks and get, uh, elevations where Behan really wants to see it. So this way we're not like doing something, I, I, this is my suggestion. Maybe I'm at a, you know, get elevations this way. When we're dumping it, we spread it. We know exactly where we're going with it. So this way, when we're really ready to put grass and trees and, you know, what we're really planning for there, right there instead of, and you know, I don't know. What do you think?
I'd say just, just do the flat bar for now.
Okay. Uh, well, yeah, we've spent a lot of money on the plan, so we ought to try to adhere to it as best we can.
Right.
It's not too expensive to get the engineer involved. I think that's a good idea, but.
I mean, I assume our guys are going to be the ones, uh, doing the leveling and bringing in the dirt. I mean, I would assume that they, 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 we could, can we use the engineer kind of plan that it's such as just as a conceptual, right? But can we use the conceptual plan without having to use engineering right now to kind of, like Alan said, use the flat area and try to get that right? First, or I mean.
We can.
I mean.
I mean, what's being used right now is actually the dog park section of the park and the front park could be grassy and walkable. I mean, the, the Noel, we were going to put up a gazebo and a bunch of other stuff. We're not even near that yet. So I would just do the flat areas and around the dog park.
Yeah, but.
Flat area upfront. So people, just a visual aesthetically, it looks pleasant.
I thought the conceptual was that, that we would make it such a level that people with the handicaps could actually walk up, look at the, uh.
Yeah, from the parking lot. Yeah, not from the front.
No, on the side there from the.
On the side, yeah.
Yeah.
So where the trail is. Get to get, you're talking about Mr. Behan, right?
Yeah. But, but we used, uh, Jay, I think was his name. Uh, we actually used them to, uh, do the grading for the Milton train station park. Yeah. Where the, uh, highway department took that and, you know, did all the, uh, uh, excavation up to that, uh, uh, you know, whatever they marked there. So they had a survey actually marked the different levels. And I didn't think it cost that much. I thought it was worth it, but I had a grant for that, so.
How much do you think this would cost?
I really don't know. If, if the board would like, I'd like to, uh, at least, uh, uh, see, uh, what his prices would be and.
I'm going to ask him how much he costs, but I mean, I wouldn't think it'd be, I, I wouldn't want to say, well, let's go spend a couple thousand dollars on the plan right now. When we need that thousand, couple thousand for dirt.
Let's just, let's just put the dirt down, actually plant seed on it and not wait for a plan, a plan on top of a plan. I mean, we have the plan. The guys, the guys in the highway department can shoot elevation. They have, they have the machinery to do that.
Right. We need the elevation. I don't think.
And the guys can do that. The guys know how to do that.
Yeah, but I don't have the plans for the elevation of the park itself with, with Behan came up with. That's what I'm saying.
When Behan gave us that, he only gave us conceptuals, right?
He had a pretty good plan. I mean, that's what we do. Looking after to get money, we try to get.
Yeah, but I mean, he doesn't have elevations and all that kind of stuff built into a written.
Let me, let me check and see exactly what we.
I just, I think we should just.
Let's at least check. I mean, it can't hurt to check. We spent $4,000 on that plan. I wouldn't want to. We should adhere to it as best we can.
Let's just check and see what we have. And then we have to wait till the weather gets, uh, in the condition where it's dry back there. And we have to make sure that the dirt is good enough to put down there. I mean, I don't, I don't know, you know, uh, the farmer also has a lot of bank run. I don't know if we want to put bank run and then put soil on top of it to get that elevation.
Now, to get that elevation, to get that elevation correct, you're talking a lot of fill. If you're going to do it, if you're going to do it in the front, I think on the conceptual plan, the ADA access was going to be from the side parking lot between the gazebo and the dog park. So we're not talking about the front section of it. The front section, I'm talking about the flat section when you first pull in and you can see from Sands Avenue.
Right.
And it starts to climb up that grade. I think that flat area there and over by the dog park could all be made immediately usable until we wait for the, you know, the additional funds. We could be years off on these funds.
Yeah, uh, I'm going to, I'm going to just check to see what exactly we have and then I'll, I'll send an email to the board and see what's going on.
Okay.
I, I agree with you. We should do something. So let's, we have probably a month before everything dries up, maybe even longer. I don't have any, uh, correspondence. Does anybody have anything? And, uh, is there any public comment? If somebody would like to make a public comment on anything? Okay. So we have, uh, a couple of resolutions in front of the board. The resolution is the, uh, is a resolution 35 to make 2020 budget amendments. And you saw with Chris Wilkow, that is actually, uh, an accountant thing to even everything out. And so the board did see all that, right?
Yes.
And does the board have any questions on any of that? So, uh, Colleen?
Councilman Corcoran?
Uh, let me read the resolution. I'm sorry. Uh, so Supervisor Lanzetta proposes the following, be resolved that the town board of town of Marlboro approves the attached 2020 budget amendment. And it's in the, uh, it's actually in the minutes and stuff like that. And it's on the website. So everybody could see that. Basically, you know, it's just, uh, where we had increased expenses. And then we had monies to decrease the expense. So it's a wash basically. So for instance, uh, we spent the increase in expense of, uh, $114,000, $643.06. And that was for the playground. We got 114, 643, 6 cents back from the funds from the grant. So just a wash thing. It's an accounting thing to keep everything, uh, status quo. So, Colleen, please.
Councilman Corcoran?
Yes.
Councilwoman Malinelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Koenig?
Yes.
Councilwoman Baker?
Yes.
Supervisor Lanzetta?
Yes, thank you. And thank you to Chris Wilkow. She does a great job. Howard, do you want to do your resolution, uh, 36?
Yeah, I will not read the whole thing, but this is the resolution to ratify the recommendations. In other words, to adopt the recommendations of the town of Marlboro Police Reform Committee as set forth in the town of Marlboro Police Reform Committee Report dated February 10th. And I'm resolving that the police reform committee report be ratified by this board. And the copy of the, uh, police reform committee report and all approved changes to the town of Marlboro Police Department rules and regulations and policies and procedure manual be sent to the director of the New York State Division of the Budget on or before April 1st, 2021, as directed by the executive order from the governor's office. And that's it.
Colleen?
Supervisor Lanzetta?
Yes, thank you very much, uh, chief and the committee and Howard for doing all that work. Really appreciate it.
Councilwoman Malinelli?
Yes.
Councilman Corcoran?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Koenig?
Yes.
All right, Howard, you're good, Howard. You win the.
Thank you.
Nicely done.
There's a form.
Like, thank God.
There's a form you have to fill out and I'll get that to you. I think we just send all this stuff electronically to an email that I have and hopefully that's it.
Okay. Well, great job as always. Appreciate it, gentlemen. Stay safe. I think, uh, Councilman, uh, Koenig would like to say, uh, something to us or maybe not, maybe. Maybe hang out and just walk, who knows?
Well, there's no, there isn't football to watch or anything. So what else are you going to do? Um, just, hey, don't forget your T-shirts for the rest of the week because it's going to be super warm and kind of like pre-springy. So enjoy it. All right. Get outside. Uh, and with that being said, I'd like us for an enjoyment. How's that?
I'll make that motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much. Everybody on the Zoom, thank you very much for participating. Have a great night. Talk to you later. Bye bye.
Bye everyone.
Thanks, guys.
Good night, everybody.
All right. I wasn't sure what was going to happen because I started, I started recording.
Yeah, can you stop it?
I can.